Someday this will still be broken for you. It's been over two years. All right, we are on air here for the finance, oh, excuse me, budget workshop. We're a couple of minutes late, so our apologies to anybody following along at home, but I'm going to turn it over to our town manager to kind of kick us off here.
Sure. Tony, a little bit different. I've had the police chief, the fire chief, and the deputy fire chief here to do some presentations related to the police budget and staffing, as well as the fire budget and staffing. Both requests are not in the budget that you have before you, so it's something that we'll have to circle back to in the budget process. There's no need to make a decision tonight, but I just want you to have the background information. So, Chief, why don't you start us off?
Sure. Councilors, good evening, and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. So, I think you all have a copy of this document. So, I won't read it, obviously, but the backstory to it is that I started having some conversations with Bill a few months ago about how difficult it has been to recruit and hire officers. And, you know, that's probably not much different for other sectors of the workforce, but it's a little different for us because depending on who we are able to hire from the workforce, if we need to send that person to the police academy, the time between when we hire them and when they're actually filling a slot on the road and basically helping us out is about a year. So, we realized after doing a five-year look back that for the last three years, solid, and you can see that in the graph that's up there, 2021, 2022, and 2023, we've been, in effect, quite understaffed. So, at full staffing so far, which would be 12 sworn officers for us, you can see in 2021, we were at an average of about 10.6 officers, 2022, 10, and 2023, 10.76, for a variety of reasons, and then we're at 10 through the first quarter of 2024. As I mentioned in that memo, we are about to hire a brand-new officer in April, April 15th, that will bring us back to 11, and then at the end of April, when our new captain starts, it'll bring us back to 12. However, I'm super worried that for the first time ever in my career, we've got a young officer starting at the low end of the pay scale that's having a very hard time finding a place to live that he can afford in the Cumberland County area. He's moving up from another state and is having a really hard time finding a place that he can be able to afford to live and make his car payment and get in here to help us out. So, we've been perpetually understaffed. That causes quite a few problems for our teams. Burnout, running short, these sort of things that I mentioned in the memo. And so, what I explained to Bill was if we could find a way that we could hire a 13th officer so that we, in effect, I believe, we would basically be spending 100% of our time, like we are now, recruiting, hiring, and training. But, we would always be working to get that 13th officer with the knowledge that probably by the time we find somebody, train them, hire them, put them on the road, we may have another opening come up that wouldn't actually keep us at 13, but hopefully it could keep us at 12 to get the work done that we need to get done. I believe that would help mitigate staff burnout, and then it would help delay these, help negate these inherent delays in our recruiting, hiring, and training. And just to give you a little bit of a backstory, when Detective Ben Burns left us last June, we started hiring to replace him in about July, and we didn't make a job offer to a candidate that we thought was the right candidate to come and join us until January. And then the rest of that time has been spent psychological, polygraph, background, physical, and then getting this person to find housing to get up here. So, the time that it takes even to find an academy graduate, which this person is, is pretty, pretty long to make that happen. So, that is our ask, that you consider allowing us to do that with the knowledge that if we get to 13, statistics are telling us it won't be for a very long time.
Can I ask a question? Bob, you can go first. My question is, just trying to paint a full picture for myself, so looking back at overtime, kind of where we're at for FY '24, and potentially for '25, so would we, how much expenditure would we be, like, how much would we be spending as a town versus, like, paring back overtime? You know, would we be kind of, would it be a wash if we brought on a 13th employee from a financial perspective? I just wonder what that looks like. Are you able to kind of answer that?
Sure. So, Bill can reel me in if I get too far off track, but I view a full-time officer, if we had that person staffed for the entire year, would cost us about $90,000. So, our overtime budget, and I can't remember exactly what the number is off the top of my head, is obviously much less than that. Bear with me, I have it right here. Should have had it out when I came up. For FY '23, our overtime budget was $85,000. So, my expectation would be that if we were to hire a 13th officer, there would be a positive impact to that overtime budget. It's not going to save, it's not going to save $90,000, but it may save a substantial portion of that. But, that, I shouldn't even say a substantial portion of it, that savings would be if we had the officer staffed, and because another person was out sick, training, vacation, or we just went down an officer, we didn't have to fill that spot based on the way staffing was, right? So, if we have three officers working at one time and one person's out, we may not fill that position because we can sort of run with two, call that running light. But, if we were down staff and we were still spending the overtime, if this makes sense, it's another person that's able to help pick up the load instead of a guy like Sergeant Ridge, who may pitch in to help and pull a lot of overtime shifts and kind of burn himself out trying to help out the team. It just spreads that out over additional officers. So, what the savings would be of that, we would have to get to 13 officers and stay there, stay there for a fiscal year to probably have a good idea. I don't know what that number might be, 15,000, 20,000?
Chief, can you pull that graph down a little bit in your graphic there? Because I think you need a little bit more explanation there. That blue line is 12. That's fully staffed. We're about a person and a half below that for the last four years. So, the overtime budget would be obviously better, but even with one more person, we'd still be filling shifts for the most part, so I don't think...
So, you wouldn't expect a cost savings at all?
Not very much. I think 10,000 or 15,000 might be reasonable, but it wouldn't be much more than that. To get to that 12th level, which we've only been there for one year out of the last five, I don't know what the answer is. This is the first time during interviews that we had two qualified candidates that we liked, and we only had really one position open. But, we're at a place right now where all we're doing is just, kind of just trying to keep our head above water. So, this was, we were kicking this idea around just to kind of bring back to you, to the finance committee, and say, you know, we've got to do something different, and I don't know what that different looks like right now other than bringing that 13th person on board with the hopes that they stay for a while until somebody else leaves, and it brings us hopefully down to 12 and not below 10 again.
If I could just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please. I think Counselor Vale had a question.
You got two cars sitting up there, and I assume that that's because they haven't been outfitted. Is that, is that right?
You're talking about the cars up on Drown Road?
Yes.
One of those is in transition and will eventually become a fire department utility vehicle, and one car is the car that will go to our new captain when she starts in, at the end of April. So, that, but that hasn't been outfitted, and she's not here yet, that's why.
So, to answer your question, you know, if I had, if I had extra money, police department would get it for us. You'd have 15 guys.
Thank you.
That being said, I think we need to rethink how we look at staffing, and this is, this is a statewide problem. The main criminal justice academy needs to be revamped. It needs to be operated like a college. You need, you can't hire somebody and send it up there. We need, we need a cadre of people coming out of there looking for jobs. You know, we're not, we ought to have an entrance exam and run these people through, through the academy so we're picking people already coming out, ready, they're, they're ready to go. And you could say, all right, we can't pay for a full-time officer, but between Yarmouth, Falmouth, and Cumberland, we can support, we can, we can get somebody to take that overtime, to get the hours down, to alleviate some of those stress levels. And I just think that we're, we're not looking at the, the big picture. We're trying to solve a problem locally that systemically isn't being addressed statewide and probably in a, in a larger fashion, New England-wide. I just think that, you know, if we, if we had young people that wanted to go into law enforcement, send them to school and pre-qualify them, you know, it's much like you go in the military. They're, you know, they just don't take a guy off the street. They do some background checks to see if he's qualified. They send him to boot camp, they train him, and then he gets shipped out to, to a unit. So, I think that, you know, I think that was, would be helpful, and I know that doesn't answer the question about putting somebody, hiring another officer, but I think if we look at it from a longer lens, it might help us.
So, those are all really big topics, and I don't disagree with you at all. There are, there are efforts underway at the academy. I'm on the board there, so I tend to hear the strategic plans and those sort of things to revamp the way that training happens. There is an opportunity when the academy is running at less than 100% capacity of officers that are hired by departments that need to get in for people to go that are college students or veterans that can actually go, as they call them, tuition students. The, the challenge and the reason they haven't had too many of those is it's been too many hired officers that are, that are working to get in. COVID created a big backlog that's just now starting to get managed. But, I think there is an effort underway to revamp the way that training looks with the knowledge that a different sort of a training setup would maybe attract people to the profession that haven't wanted to jump in. Maybe, maybe a hybrid of a campus model and a shorter time of residency where you're learning sort of the boot camp, you know, how to be disciplined, how to go without sleep, how to have some stress inoculation, those sort of things. So, I think some of those efforts are underway, but economies of scale, I think, to your point about the problems with recruitment and retention nationwide are very good conversations to have, for sure.
I've observed this from a couple of different perspectives, partly because a lot of the criminal justice students at Hussin also were football players, and I know many of them are now police officers in various parts of the state. But also, my nephew, who had a liberal arts degree, went to the academy. So, I, I think you're right. The, the types of training need to be more diversified if you're going to have a diversified police force. So, I kind of, I was going to object or say that's really not what's happening, Bob, but it is really what's kind of what, what's happening based on capacity at the criminal justice academy. Do you see any increase in capacity at the criminal justice academy?
Yes, but it takes money, and that money hasn't been forthcoming from the state just yet, but it would require the renovation of some dormitories or a switch to a hybrid model where there was some off-campus work and then a shorter stay at the academy because then you could have a greater number of people doing work either remotely or on a college campus and then coming there for a shorter period of time. That would help increase capacity, but those are decisions that will take a while.
I think the different college programs that are offering criminal justice are doing a good job, but they're not providing that specific tack, specific tactical training that you get at the police academy that's really important.
That's true.
Unity, unity colleges for sale. You could, guys could just take that.
All right, all right. Mr. Chair, if I could add just one point, it was something that occurred to me as Bill was speaking. Sort of one of the, what the impetus was to start this conversation was that we searched so long to find a candidate that we thought was appropriate for us to hire. We made a job offer to that person. They accepted. I'm working on getting him up here if he could find a place to live. And then we had another candidate that has, without, you know, going into great detail because they haven't been made a job offer and haven't accepted one, a really incredibly rich life experience and professional experience that I thought would have made an amazing addition to this police department. Has not been to the academy, but indicated that if they were offered and accepted the job, they would move to Maine from being down in the Boston area and attend the academy and join our team. So, we knew that if we were authorized this 13th position, made that person a job offer, and hired them, and then put them in the academy, again, we're looking at that year, and then kind of looking at the demographics of our current agency, what are the chances in the next 12 months that we don't have another opening because of folks that may be nearing the 25-year mark of their career or greater? And then trying to find a way out of this sort of vortex of just constantly being understaffed. That really was the sort of impetus for this, as I mentioned, and I thought, I can't, you can't say no if I don't ask. All I can do is tell you what I think would make sense and would help out the team and ask you to give it some consideration, so I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, so just, just big picture takeaway for myself here because looking at this chart that we have, are we currently budgeted for 12 officers?
Yes.
Okay, and we're at 10 right now?
Yes.
Okay, and we're looking to make the request for the 13th officer with the idea that we may meet back in the middle at 12 at some point?
And that 13th officer would be going to the academy sometime, probably July or August, somewhere in that ballpark, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So, just looking back at the overtime, and this is just because I don't understand enough about it, I see, you know, the proposed budget for '25 being at $90,000. So, then I ask myself the question, why aren't we pursuing 14?
Great question. I think that that's just been an effort to be responsible with our budget requests and, and try to, you know, get there by incrementation. So, I think our, our overtime ask goes up every year sort of by the percentage that wages are going up every year. And, you know, that's, the overtime is impacted by a lot of different factors, you know, the amount of time people take off. We try to send people to training. Sometimes we have to backfill them. There are some specialties out there that incur overtime for canine track or something of that nature. So, you know, we found, looking back, that we run about, you know, for every shift that's taken by, by an officer off with pay, that we're filling about 50% of those shifts, maybe a little bit higher with, with overtime. So, we are spending that money, but we're not spending that money to always be staffed up. We're spending that money to be not super comfortably staffed. We're still running light while spending those funds.
That, that would be my question. So, you mentioned that to outfit another officer, the 13th, for instance, it would be around $90,000?
That's about their pay, the average pay and benefits for a year.
Sure. And last year, or for 2023, we were spending 85K in overtime, right? So, would the idea be that you spend 90 to not have to spend 85, so there's a net loss of 5? But, at the end of the day, you've got this additional officer that can fill all these additional roles and responsibilities that you need, or?
I think if I'm following, you know, Bill and I are guessing that if we got a 13th officer, we trained that person, staffed him, got him into the role, didn't lose anybody else, and we were at 13, that we might realize a savings in our overtime budget of 10 to...
Gotcha.
10,000 plus, maybe. And again, it's never happened before. You could look back at our overtime budget since I came here, and it's, you know, it's always been pretty close to capacity, except I think we did really well during COVID when, you know, nobody was moving, nothing was going on. I think we were pretty well under budget for that year.
So, we may have a potential to limit that $85,000 overtime down to 60K because there would still be some overtime here or there? Is that what it sounds like?
Yeah, you're, you're talking about a $25,000 savings?
Well, no. Oh, I guess, yeah, drop it down to 70K. Yeah, sorry.
Potentially.
Okay.
Potentially, but I...
But you'd still be spending the additional salaries of the 13th, right?
Right.
One other question. From a forecasting perspective, you were saying that he would start in the academy in July, you know, if we did this, this additional position. From a financial impact perspective, are we paying his salary starting in July? Or how does that, like, what are our financial commitments to him, to the schooling? How does that work?
Right. This, this person would be on the books for us, so they would be getting paid. So, if, so if we, if we bring our, our officer on that we have made the job offer to that's trying to find a place to live, he comes on, and then our captain comes on, and then we hire this other person, they would be on the payroll while we were training them up. So, there, there would be that period of time when we would be theoretically, if we don't lose anybody else, at 13 and would realize the benefit of that person after their training process.
How long is the training?
It's 20, 18 weeks, 18 weeks at the academy, plus then some time on field training before and maybe after. All depends on the dynamic of when we bring them on and then when they, when they go to the academy. So, call it, call it 18 weeks at the academy, and then maybe another 12 in field training.
So, like, December, we'd be hitting fully staffed?
That would be, well, if the person went to the academy in July, they'd be graduating in December, and then they'd be going on field training. Sometime several months after that, they would be hitting the road and bringing us up to full staff.
Okay.
Yeah. Chief, can you, based upon 12, can you tell me what your staffing levels would be, days, eves, and mids?
Absolutely. It's a little hard to follow, but I'll do my best. So, when we're at full staff, we have myself and a captain that are here during the day. We have, again, at full staff, we have a detective. And then on patrol, we have a patrol officer that works days, so 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If that officer needs backup, that becomes the detective, the captain, me. At 2:00 PM, a sergeant comes on. So, we have a sergeant that works seven days a week. There's two of them. And they come on and work from 2:00 PM until midnight. Then we get a evening officer that comes on at 4:00 PM. So, from 4:00 until 8:00 PM, there's a sergeant and a patrol officer working. And then at 8:00 PM, our overnight officer comes on. So, between 8:00 PM and 2:00 AM, there's two, and then between 2:00 and 6:00, those wee hours of the morning, it goes down to one until the day shift comes on and starts that cycle all over again.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I, I like to look at the big picture and hopefully solve problems that filter down to the smaller scale. It seems to me, it, like, we're not going to solve anything here tonight. It seemed to me that we should coordinate with Falmouth and Yarmouth and, and look at their staffing and, and say, okay, Cumberland has 12, Yarmouth's got 15, Falmouth's got 16 or something, and be hiring at a macro, macro level to support all three, all three police departments and, and creating a command staff that, that utilizes all three communities. You know, that's one of the things that Bill Stiles, when he was here, we've talked about expansion of services and with the idea of saving money, but I think in a, if a, if you, if you broaden your pyramid, chiefs, lieutenants, captains, you have a, you have a better opportunity to retain your, your people because they see themselves in a, in a little bit, if the pyramid is broader at the base, there's, there's better room for retention, advancement, and they can see themselves having a career. Whereas if the pyramid is very tight, you're up and out, you know?
Right. I don't disagree with that.
I'm not telling you anything you don't know.
Chief, if you hire this new person and the town of Cumberland pays for him to go to the academy, is there anything that they guarantee so much time to the town of Cumberland so if somebody else wants to snatch him up?
There's no way we can contractually obligate them to be here, but the way the law works, if we were to hire that person, train them, and then within five years of graduation they leave us, then there's a kind of a step-down process by which the town would get reimbursed for their, the cost of their academy training. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what it is. It's not...
About 42 the first year.
Thank you. I was going to guess 40. It's like, yeah, it's like 42, and then it comes down 20% a year. So, there's a way that some of that would get recouped. If the person that I'm thinking of was to come here, my guess is that they would be here as a long-term employee. But again, it's hard to read the tea leaves.
But, but that reimbursement for the academy training is pursuant to state law, right? There's a state law there, okay.
Exactly. Thank you. Great questions. Thank you.
I, I think it's really a placeholder for the council. I think this is a really important issue. I, I think you bring up some great things strategically over the region, but the, the real issue today is that we have been hovering around 10 for the last four years, and we can't predict that. So, yes, we're almost to full staff, and we will be sometime in the near future, but the cycle has been consistent for the last four years that we never expected Jake to leave. We never expected Ben to leave. I mean, these things happen. Life changes. People have changes in jobs and careers, and all of a sudden, now we're faced with trying to figure out what's next. And I think it was an important message for the chief to share with you tonight. He's not expecting any solutions, but when we circle back to going through the budget items, I'd like you guys just to kind of keep this as a placeholder for consideration as we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Bill, is this currently reflected?
It is not in the budget.
Okay.
It's only, it's only in the, in your budget, it's only for 12 officers, not 13.
Would it be possible to add it so we could see what that modeling would look like?
Sure. Just one other que, the chief, chief, one more question before you head out. You wanted to ask him about the nuisance ordinance and the impact that you thought the police department might face if they had, were forced to enforce the rules around the nuisance ordinance.
Right. So, chief, do you mind walking us through what that looks like for you? In the event there is a nuisance ordinance?
Sure.
You're called out at 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, whatever time it is, to check to see if there's been a violation, how that looks for you?
Absolutely. I've done a couple of things, reviewed that, the ordinance, I think you're maybe using as a consideration document from Kennebunk. Exchanged emails with the chief down in Kennebunk today. And so, basically, it looks like this. If that, if that ordinance as written was passed and in effect here in Cumberland, we would need to have a calibrated noise-measuring tool. That tool needs to be calibrated every year without fail or it becomes useless. Every single member of the police department needs to be trained on the use of that instrument, however that training looks like, and has to be retrained on it at whatever interval the manufacturer says they need to be trained on. As new employees come on, that needs, they need to be trained on it, and again, maintained. If we have one of those, it's going to live probably here at the station. If an officer, just hypothetically, is out on the west end and they get a noise complaint on the east end, or if they're on the west end and they get a noise complaint on the west end, they've got to leave where they are, come back here, get that noise-measuring device, take it back out there. Then, I think that ordinance talks about measuring it at a height of four feet for a certain period of time to gather these measurements. And in my mind, I am trying to envision an officer standing at the property line of a, of a, of a piece of property where there's some noise being emitted and standing there with their device to measure the noise. And if I'm on that property and I know the police officer's there measuring that noise, I probably shut it off, and I don't get 15 minutes of recording to be able to have some enforcement mechanism for it. And I can go into much greater detail about what the enforcement mechanism looks like after you issue the summons for a violation of city ordinance. It's a little bit Byzantine, I guess, maybe. It's not a fair word, but close to it. I guess, in my opinion, having read the ordinance, if, if this is helpful, I haven't seen a noise issue here in town for the past eight years that the current statute in the criminal law for disorderly conduct wouldn't resolve. And so, I'm happy to have the discussion if there is a situation going on or we're worried about a situation going on that the disorderly conduct statute wouldn't resolve. But I feel that until we reach that, where we're having a problem, and there's something that it can't resolve, we've got something that's worked for many years.
Can you, can you remind me what the disorderly conduct statute standard is?
Yes, I actually left my portfolio over there, and the statute is in there. But it basically says, a person is guilty of disorderly conduct if, without reason to do so, they, from a private, there's a couple of different sections, but the section we're discussing says, from a private place, they... Thank you, Sarge.
Yeah, that's fine if you pull it up. It's okay. I'm just trying to benchmark between the two.
Sure. It says, in a private place, the person makes a loud and unreasonable noise, including but not limited to loud and unreasonable noise resulting from the use of consumer fireworks that can be heard by another person and who may be, who may be a law enforcement officer as unreasonable noise in the public, in a public place or another private place. So, if I'm the law enforcement officer, I can be on the road, listening to the noise coming from a private place, or I could be on a neighbor's private place, listening to the noise in a private place, and having been ordered to do so by a law enforcement officer, I'm sorry, fails to, fails to cease after having been warned by a law enforcement officer to do so. So, in other words, unreasonable is kind of the, the linchpin to that law. The officer has to go to where the noise is. Most times, the easiest way for us to handle it is we observe the noise ourselves. We determine that's objectively unreasonable based on the totality of the circumstances. Could be how loud it is, could be what type of noise it is, could be what time of day it is, and then we go and give the person a warning to stop the noise or else.
So, there's nothing in that, in that statute or standard that talks about a decibel level or a time of day?
No. We usually, we usually will factor in some kind of time of day. In other words, you know, you're playing...
Construction crews working or...
Yeah, yeah.
People with lawn care, yeah.
Sure. If you're playing your stereo out in the backyard, because it's a nice summer day at 2:00 in the afternoon, there's going to be a different probably standard for that as opposed to 2:00 in the morning.
But also, to be clear, that, that applies to private residences as well as public residences.
It certainly, it certainly does.
Public locations, right?
It certainly does. It certainly does.
So would that effectively be somebody calling you and saying, we believe there's disorderly conduct happening as opposed to, so, I guess, what if, what if there is a a standing, operating piece of machinery, right? That is running and buzzing all day long to keep something running? Let's say I have a piece of property and I decide, hey, I want to install X, Y, and Z on my property.
Sure.
That requires some type of extra battery or extra generator. That generator is running twenty-four hours a day. Would that fall within that? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I have never encountered that myself before, but hypothetically, yes. The decision is just going to be based on the officer's discretion about, is it reasonable or is it unreasonable? If you and I are neighbors and you have something that's making a hum on your, on your property, my right to not have your noise intrude on my property if they abut each other is not absolute. So you're going to make some noise on your property. I may hear it from time to time. But if there was something that was unceasing and it was loud and it was unreasonable, then, then we could still say, I don't know what that is, but it needs to stop. And we can issue a warning for disorderly conduct verbally in the moment for, like, a loud party. Sometimes we do that. Or a written disorderly conduct warning saying, we've been here a couple of times, we've talked about this. If we have to come back here in the next thirty days for a complaint for this, you could be charged. And I think that could be used.
Charged under what?
It's a state law. It's a misdemeanor crime. You'd have to go to court.
But Bill, have we checked to see whether, like, what that state law violation would be? Like, whether that, because that, to me, was always the gap. I always felt like we were like, well, you'll be charged under this nuisance law. But if, when I read the nuisance law at the state level, it didn't seem to apply to the fact pattern that I just laid out for everybody. And so for me, I'm concerned about this gap of somebody being able to operate some, something. Like, if I turn on a generator in my front yard and I turned it on for twenty-four hours a day.
Three days.
Three days straight. And technically, that didn't fall under the nuisance law at the state level. And so I'm wondering, like, I just want to make sure we're, before we throw the, our potential Kennebunk benchmark ordinance out the window, that we feel like that's covered.
So I would just offer...
Makes sense?
I would offer a couple of things. I'm happy to do some research with that, about that, with our district attorney's office and maybe with the town attorney. I can tell you, the chief from Kennebunk told us that ordinance was passed, he said, twenty-plus years ago, because of a very specific set of circumstances they were dealing with in town, I think similar to what you're describing, that it was never actually used. He doesn't think it's ever actually been used, and they're actually looking to try to change it. One of their lieutenants is doing some research into what might work better. And what he's said so far is that there are a few towns in York County that have a very similar ordinance. And then a lot of the towns have an ordinance that's very similar to the disorderly conduct law that we already, disorderly conduct statute that's on the books for, for state law. So I'm happy to check in to see, hey, in that fact pattern, would the district attorney's office consider charges of disorderly conduct if we choose to exercise that option?
Concern from our attorney is the enforcement of the nuisance ordinance. And if it were specific to one property and one property only, it would not work well.
Well, why would it be specific to one property?
It shouldn't be. But if all of a sudden it just always consistently is one property and it's not enforced anywhere else in any other district, that, that is problematic. And that's kind of what our attorney is warning against.
And we're not even sure that, because the construction's not complete, whether it would even...
Raised to that level. That's right. So I just don't know.
I just want to make sure, whatever we do, we've, we've considered that fact pattern into whatever our decision is. Because if we decide to get rid of our noise ordinance proposed, that's fine. But if it doesn't cover this issue, then to me, that's just a huge gap that we need to figure out.
It's a huge gap.
It is now. And the escalation of just one incident is difficult to legislate. And that's been the problem. So I would, I would say that maybe a workshop with the town attorney, with the chief present, would be helpful so that everybody's on the same page and everybody can get their questions out because it's not specific to one property. It has to be applied townwide or else it's unenforceable. And we add a level of, I think the chief explained it pretty well, enforceability that almost doesn't work, so...
One question that I would ask the town attorney too is, if we didn't move forward with the ordinance option now and we waited until we encountered a situation which we find is not covered by the statute, could we then proceed with the ordinance and have that be a potential fix for us? Because we haven't received any complaints about loud and persistent noise that we haven't been able to deal with, with the statute. So this hasn't been a problem for us yet. I don't know if not passing the ordinance now closes the door on us or if we wait until this becomes a problem that can't be addressed by state law and then look into the ordinance. I don't know the answer to that, but I would welcome a workshop to ask those questions.
This whole noise ordinance thing is such a slippery slope. In my neighborhood, a gentleman buys a truckload of tree-linked firewood, has it delivered to his house, cuts it up with a chainsaw, splits it with his wood splitter. He works daylight to dark. The only time he has to do it is on the weekends. His neighbors are irate because he's out there on the weekend running a chainsaw and running his wood splitter. How can you enforce that? The guy's trying to keep his house warm.
Yeah, but those are all during the day. So like, to me...
No, well, not always, Mark. I mean, you know, and leaf blowers, chainsaws. There's so many different things that this involves.
Yeah, again, that's not the fact pattern I'm talking about. But like, I'm talking about a, a piece of machinery that is turned on to keep specifically two to three feet of ice chilled for days on end. So anyone at any point in time can go out and ice skate on it. And if that, if that's six industrial chillers that you use to create an ice rink in, for the Olympics, is it okay in a residential neighborhood to have those running twenty-four seven when other neighbors can hear those? And so that, to me, is like a question that, does that fall under the nuisance ordinance statewide? And if it doesn't, then like, why are we not addressing it? I guess I'm just trying to figure, and I realize this is very hyper fact-specific to one particular property. But I also think turning away from it and just saying, oh, we can use disorderly con... I guess, if, if we can use the disorderly conduct standard and it meets those requirements, by all means, why are we passing another rule? Totally with everybody there.
Yeah, I think...
But if that doesn't work, then what are we doing?
Two, two just thoughts. If this ordinance was to pass to cover that fact pattern that you're describing, it would one hundred percent cover the fact pattern that Councilor Cobb was describing. That it's loud, persistent noise for more than fifteen minutes that when measured from the end of the property exceeds some decibel noise. Also, and I'm trying to think of a hypothetical scenario where a person would be running a generator or some other piece of equipment that might generate that sort of a noise for another purpose that nobody here would find unreasonable, doesn't matter, at the end of the property. If the decibel level gets to a certain level, it's prohibited, they've got to stop doing it. I don't know what that might be. But it would pertain to any piece of equipment at the edge of any piece of property that made that kind of noise, whether it's a chiller for an ice skating rink or anything else. And so we could find ourselves grappling with some unintended consequences, maybe, potentially.
But you're saying a disorderly conduct statute that, or a law that we currently have would cover a twenty-four seven-operated generator for whatever you're using it for?
Potentially. I think that's, I think that's a great conversation to have with our town attorney and potentially with the district attorney's office. Because then, then the question of reasonability comes into it. What is it that you're doing? Why are you making this noise? Is it because you got no power while you're having some major repair done?
Which would be reasonable.
Or because you're doing something for recreation on your property that's bothering other people next to you?
I just, yeah, I got to echo what Mark said. I a hundred percent agree with you, Mark. I'd rather not see a noise ordinance. I guess if the DA says, yeah, you've got industrial compressors that are running twenty-four seven, three o'clock in the morning, that's not a reasonable, I don't really see a need for this. But we, we had a whole neighborhood or potentially two or three streets for neighbors that have to be protected once this thing's up and running. That's, that's my worry, chief.
Oh, I completely understand. I just, I don't, I don't know the legality of potentially moving forward in this fashion. We wait, this noise goes online, the neighbors call us. We try to use the disorderly conduct statute to enforce that noise. We find out that it's not appropriate and can't be used. And then we proceed with an ordinance to try to address the issue. If, if that is possible, that might be a way to go. If, if not, we look now.
But, but I don't understand why we can't just factually play that out, like, with the DA right now? Like, to say, in the event this occurred, would this be permissible to enforce under the current statute?
Well, this, unfortunately, this current DA doesn't want to prosecute anything, especially minor stuff. That's...
That's fair.
I'm trying to take her out of it.
To keep the chief out of it.
I'm with you.
But she...
These are just, I mean, these are hypothetical fact patterns that you play at law school all day long. Like, to me, so it's like, we know what the rules of the statute are. Would this apply to it? Let's talk about it. And so if, whether someone at the DA's level would enforce it or do something about it. I mean, are we reliant upon that? Because...
No, we don't have to ask their permission to charge someone. But if we charge someone and the DA's office looks at that fact pattern and says, based on what I'm seeing, I don't think the statute fits, we won't, we won't prosecute the case. They just dismiss it, and then we're just back where we started. So that, that's a possibility. And they may not give us a bright-line rule. They may not give us a, yes, we will prosecute this. It's usually going to be, I have concerns, I don't have concerns, but we need to wait to see your case when it comes in, taking into account the totality of the circumstances, and then we'll decide. So we may not, we may get some guidance. We probably won't get a yes or a no.
Okay.
So, so the other piece that Bailey brought up during the last meeting we had was the licensing. And if it went to licensing, it would be back before you each year with standards. And if those standards weren't met, that license would be not allowed. So that is another way to go forward. So that, the attorney was, our attorney was trying to push us away from that. And because that gets complicated if, if it's only, the license only applies to one property, it seems very, not selective. So the planning board next month is going to have on its agenda the outdoor recreation, or the residential outdoor recreational space. So now we'll have a set of ordinances that could be enforced by a license if we wanted to in the future. So that's the second path forward. So I think we get two bites at this, but I think the, the chief's point and the nuisance ordinance are kind of on parallel tracks, and we probably ought to bring it into the station real soon.
Sounds good. I forgot about the licensing thing.
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, there's not much to talk about, but I just think that it's worth exploring. Like, people have to get a license for their dog. Why are we allowing people to build ice rinks without? It should be, from a medical, like, and a liability perspective, we should be enforcing that regardless. Like, I don't know. It just seems like...
Okay. That was really helpful, chief. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I think that's what we should do. I get that it's...
Hey, Chief Small, how you doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. I promised to return my little wheelie scooter. I'm back to crutches for the last two days, and then I'll bring it back to you guys, I promise.
Not a rush.
Chief, I know you hear it all the time, but that, that program you have is top-notch. It really is. When my wife had surgery, we were able to get one of those little scooters and, same with Mark and...
I used one last year.
Yeah.
That's, that's what they're for. And we're happy to be able to help. Sometimes we deliver them because people can't get there. It's a great program that we've done for several years, and it grows. Sometimes we have to push out of town people out of the way because we don't want to take everything.
I don't want to let them take all the credit because Alliance Club was instrumental on that, too.
As well as some other community groups, but yes.
It's also made me way more capable at my house, which has resulted in me having to do more work with a broken leg. So it's kind of a muted thank you, but thank you nonetheless.
Chief, would you give the council just a quick update on what the last couple of days have looked like too, before you get started? Because I think it's important to know how many calls the team has been on.
Yeah. Thank goodness it's been a weekend where we had a little bit more help around from the call staff. But we did over thirty calls the weekend. And as per our regular numbers, about forty percent were EMS-related. But we had a handful that were actual carbon monoxide calls where people, some people have them in their generators, they're in their garages. Others had them outside, but they were right near windows or intakes. So we, we were there mitigating some tough places. And it's one of those, okay, you don't have electricity. We got to tell you, you can't run your generator. So we don't want to go in and completely ventilate it now. We're blowing in all this cold air. But it was a very, very busy time. And I'm very proud of the crew because they were really, we stacked calls so we didn't strip one area of town. They just were really thinking heads up and my hat's off. The PD was doing a great job managing which parts of town needed to be closed off. And Chris's group in, in Public Works, we've never had it where if we had trees down the loaders or right out opening the rows up where they could. We had sections of town that we just could not get through. And his guys are right out there making it so we can go do our part. So it was a really, there were some long days driving around trying to manage stuff. But it wasn't the ice storm of ninety-eight, but boy, it seemed to start having some comparisons to that. So proud of the crew for over that thirty. And I don't know how many mutual aid, and we're going to talk about mutual aid here, but we were going out of town a lot because everybody was just stacking calls.
Well, thank you, chief.
Yeah. So kind of like what Chip did, we're going to talk about staffing for the fire department. Bill has asked us to come and do a presentation. Our new deputy, Andy Turkott, has helped put a lot of the numbers together. He represents a lot of things in the department. But one of the pieces is the full-time staff. And Gerald Cross is here as well, and he's the deputy chief. And his oversight is the call company, staff responses, recruiting, retaining that staff for us. So we've, we've got a handful of slides, and we're not going to spend a lot of time on some of them. We just want to say, here's where our stats are for the last year, two or three, whatever it may be. And again, we'll let the color speak for themselves. Other than COVID was a drop in numbers because people just didn't want to go to the hospital. So now that we're back to whatever normal is, we're back to that average that we have, which is about, we're different than a lot of other communities because we don't have nursing homes, et cetera. But we're about sixty percent EMS and about forty percent on the fire-related call. And some of those are together, right? A car accident, how do you mark that between the two? This is one of our important slides, and we want to put it right at the very beginning. Right now, as we speak, I'm there Monday through Friday. Andy does four tens. He does the ten-hour day so he can be more involved with the trainings on the EMS side towards the later parts of the day when the call company is, is coming home. Every Thursday night, we do training. So with the two people, and again, I'll get into another slide that explains this a little bit better. But we can do one call at a time with, with just the two people we have on duty. That's twenty-four seven. We have two people on duty. And again, during the weekdays, it's us and then certainly the call company with qualifications can help. So we can do one medical call and even on the fire calls. And to the example of this weekend where we had a handful of residents that had carbon monoxide in it, where we had to evacuate the building, over two hundred parts per million. We're supposed to have four people there per OSHA. I've got the standard number down at the bottom. Don't ask me to try to tell you what that number is. But it's, we have to have, in order for the safety of the firefighters making entry into that immediately dangerous-to-life-and-health atmosphere, two, two people go in, they can't go in by themselves. And we have to, by that OSHA mandate, have to have two people outside in case somebody goes down. So we wanted to show that, that that is something that's been in place. Not just recently, but it, it came out in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe. So it goes back quite a few years ago when that mandate was in place. With, with the two people that are on duty, again, not, the, the numbers mean that there are four shifts that are working. So we have eight full-time people right now that coexist on the shifts. There's always two on duty. They work a shift on, a shift on, or, excuse me, a shift off, then a shift on, then they go on their days off. And they're just complemented by the other four shifts. And they all stay at Central Station when, when they're on duty. I'll get to a slide in, in a minute about where we are today and where we've been. But it does warrant, we've had a lot of conversations, again, Deputy Cross being mostly in charge or predominantly in charge of the call company. We know that the numbers are declining. That is a nationwide... We know that the numbers are declining. That is a nationwide thing. I've been down to the National Fire Academy eight times and every one of them is, we can't find people, just like Chief Rumsey. Doesn't matter if it's full-time staff to call company, it's just all the rules that are being added. And spouses working, coaching, et cetera. It's harder to find that. So what we've put in our capital improvements budget, and this has been in here for probably five or six years. Because of the number of people that are going down, the number of pieces of equipment that we have are going down as well. An ambulance that we've got on order right now, we need to buy another one, that's four hundred and fifty thousand, give or take. Fire trucks are around a million dollars. So we're saving two million dollars there because we know it doesn't do any good to have a fire truck sitting in the station if it's just going to be sitting idle. So that's an, an important thing. When a truck goes out, we have to have the SCBA qualified people. They're not vehicles that are showing up with, with drivers. We need the drivers, we want them. It's, we've got to have the people that can make entry in, into those buildings.
Hey, Chief, can I ask you a question? And you might get to this. You mentioned that there's a reduction in the amount of individuals who are available to assist, right? But what about the number of calls or the number of, like, the need? So I understand there's like a, a reduction in the supply of people able to work there, but what about the demand?
So Andy's going to get into the population of the town and the growth and the number of calls. I showed you that first call. Well, there is, is a rising part of it. I'm not an old person. I like to think at fifty-three, started the department in nineteen eighty-six. At that time, each truck probably had twelve people on each truck. There was a captain, there was two lieutenants. We used to ride in the back of the fire trucks, a little bit difference in safety back then than there is now. But we just don't have that call volume. We might have four or five per truck on the call company side and that doesn't mean that they're all around at the same time. So to answer your question, I don't have that exact number. I can go to, go back to it. We did twelve hundred calls last year. So calls going up, call company going down.
Gotcha.
It's, it hits us pretty hard, especially during the weekdays when it's a white collar community. I don't know how different to say that without sounding narrow-minded, but that is predominance. Where there just aren't the people in town, but we still have calls that occur during that daytime. We want to hit the mutual aid stat for us. And there is a couple of slides with this because we really think it's an important part of what we're doing for our mutual partners. Last year, our mutual aid, what we received and, and gave out of our twelve hundred calls, you can see in that lower left-hand column. Year to date now, you can see where it's at. And the important part to show is twenty-one percent of the time, twenty-five percent this year, we are doing mutual aid calls. Now, I'm not going to say that sometimes it's, you know what, we were responding with Yarmouth Fire Department, we got there, it was nothing and we turned them around and sent them home. But the deal is that they were coming to assist us and then we got there as quickly as we could, say, we're good, go home. More numbers, I won't hit it. You can just see the spikes from what we have from one to the other. There's, there's categories of, we give the mutual aid, we receive, but there's also an automatic aid. Quick example would be on the four side, we had a call today up towards Yarmouth. Yarmouth is automatically sending an engine along with us. We're all going at the same time. Trucks painted different, lettered different, but it's all us as one group that are, that are going. The, the different spikes, again, of the different towns, you see that are immediate partners that we typically use. Gray is one of them. We cover a lot on the Turnpike and other areas. So instead of the old days when we'd go out with the fire truck and turn around in the, the turnarounds, we go to the gray exit, they come down to the service plaza, we all work together. So we're not impacting our resources. This is a really important slide that I think needs to be delivered, that we are not doing the same thing that our other partners are. It's got to be a two-way street, not meant to sound like we're, we're not wanting to play. It's that we just can't play. Those streets, as we put in there, mean something that we've got to be able to go both. I just picked three of the towns. When we go to those towns, the other town does not want to see, oh, great, there's a fire truck that pulls up and there's only one person on it. A million dollar taxi cab does not work. When that truck goes out of town, we want to make sure that when we arrive, that they've got three people at least that can wear their SCBA. The reason we picked three is they might only have one person that can be helping. We're going to work to help. And we do it automatically because we're not waiting for the town to get there and then say, oh, we've got a problem and now they're calling us and we're already five or ten minutes beyond.
Is it warm in here?
It's like either really hot or really cold.
Can you turn that down, Dan, next to you? Bottom one, yep.
Just the down?
Down one, down one, down one. There you go.
Are you hot too, Bill? It feels hot in here.
Very hot.
It's like the fire department's in here.
Twenty minutes, you'll be freezing. Thirty seconds, it'll change.
Yeah.
Right. Can't wait.
Hey, hey, Chief, why you talk about, you, you talked about the two-way street there. Are, are you, I understand that you effectively can't play that direction to provide assistance. It almost sounded like we don't want to be in a position where we're showing up to help and we have one person on the truck, right? Are we also feeling like we're not getting assistance coming our direction?
No, we are.
With multiple people on a truck, ready to help with staff, we just want to be able to reciprocate that when we help out other communities based on this understanding, right?
That is correct. And I'll, and I'll get to the slide that shows those numbers. But in some certainly have a lot better opportunity than others to do that, but, but I'll show you where we are. This slide here just shows us twenty years ago, twenty-four years ago, we had, Chris Bolduc was the full-time paramedic chief. I was a part-time fire chief. We had two people on duty, two paramedics. That's what we had. That was over twenty years ago. That's what we had. We saw some growth. I got a grant in oh-nine somewhere to get a firefighter. When we combined the rescue and fire departments, our staffing is what it is today, where we have two paramedics on duty. I'm now a full-time chief and now we have Andy as the, as the full-time chief. So the twenty-four, seven part, we have not increased in over twenty years. We have not increased.
Can I ask you, you, sorry, to jump around?
No.
What is, so, you know, say our population is eight thousand, our household counts four thousand. What would be like the, the target ratio of paramedic to, you know, household or firefighter to how, you know what I'm trying to say? Like, what would be like optimum performance there?
Andy's going to get into some of the, again, that data.
Yeah.
That will show some of those things. But like I hit in one of the other slides, it's harder for us in some ways because we don't have the commercial growth.
Yeah.
You guys hear it all the time. Yep. How is this going to impact the schools by adding all these people?
Yeah.
Our obligation is it doesn't matter where they work or how they come, we're still.
Obligated.
Obligated to try to protect. And we can only do one medical call at a time.
Okay. How many ambulances do we have?
We have three, but one is staffed.
Okay.
And, and a lot of times the three is because we have two of them really on the books, if you will. We just don't sell the third.
Okay.
But Twin Brooks, certainly the Cumberland Fair, Harness Racing, all those things, we, we cover with those events.
Okay.
And again, he's going to get into it. I'm just looking at my notes. There's been about an eighteen percent increase. Just as a simple layout, you guys should have the slides, but this one just pitches, say, a thousand words. We were two, we became one, but our staffing hasn't changed. This is the staffing of that we realized today. This, we had like six different formatings and this isn't the right one. So I apologize for the letters off some of these towns landing, but you get the, you get the picture. Falmouth is the most robust. It's not a secret to anybody. Some of you may have talked to people in Falmouth to say, hey, what is it that you guys do? We know they have a commercial base in different demographics in their community. But it's still whether it's a residential incident, medical call to house fires, CO calls like we had this weekend. We went down to Falmouth three times this weekend. So again, fortunately, we had some call company that was able to go with our full-time people, which leaves us kind of stripped. So we can write, I'm sorry, Shirley.
Are those firefighter EMTs or firefighters or firefighter paramedics or?
It's actually a, a good question, not just about that. But if we're now at the point of hiring, or what we will be, we believe, and, and discussion about hiring. Because like Chip was saying, it's so difficult to get people into the organization. Previously, we would say, if you're not a paramedic, we don't want to talk to you, right? Because we could get that. They were a paramedic and a firefighter, one and two certification, we can get that. That is simply not happening now. So what we are doing is firefighter one and two, we'll train you to some of that. But also you can come in as a basic EMT and we'll give you two years, we'll fund it, cover them, to get them to go to that advanced EMT level. And if they want to become a paramedic, we'll work out those numbers as well to keep raising that bar.
Do you still require them to become firefighters if they're not interested in firefighting, but just interested in paramedic, EMT?
Yeah. They, they have to be able to do both because we just don't have that depth. So that is the, the reason.
So Dan, this is a really important slide, but it, it wouldn't fit all the people that are represented on this slide. So I want to stop for a second. So you see Cumberland, there's two. Every one person represents four behind it. So we have eight paramedics and just to basically staff that around the clock, you need, to staff two around the clock, you need eight. So we have an eight-day work week. If you multiply every one of those numbers, Falmouth is forty, Freeport is sixteen, and Gray is twelve, Yarmouth is twelve, Cape Elizabeth is twenty. That's how many people they're actually staffing on that slide. And that, that is kind of overwhelming when you kind of think about.
Twenty people?
Yes. Four bu, four, each one of those represents four. To staff it twenty-four, seven for an eight-day week and all these towns are working eight-day weeks.
Well, I think to myself, like, Cape, population-wise, right? If you look at Falmouth's population, it's like close to thirteen K, you know, twelve thousand, eight hundred and something, right?
Yep.
So that's in a different realm than where we are at eighty-five hundred. But Cape, for instance, their population's nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four, so not that much.
Six hundred.
Six hundred people, more people. But they've got two and a half times the level of staffing that we do.
That's alarming.
They have forty people working around the clock?
Not around the clock. They have, they have ten people working around the clock, but to get to ten, you have to have four.
Got it.
Four for every, everyone that's shown there.
Got it.
So we're at eight, even though you think, oh, there's no way we're at two. We have eight paramedics.
Two around the clock. Right. Okay.
It's Yarmouth's population.
Bob, Bill.
Me, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob, and then I.
I was waiting to be recognized by the chair.
Please.
The further you get into your presentation, DA, the more obvious it becomes to me that our, our methodology is not working. And it's time for a wholesale change. We need a consolidated fire department with the surrounding towns. And as, as long as we become a white collar community and we, affordability becomes less and less, our ability to have people to live in a community and, and work in the fire department is, is virtually nil. And so I think the reliance becomes on a full-time professional fire department. And the only way that I can see that that works effectively is by the surrounding communities creating a single fire department. And I wonder how many conversations you've had with the fellow chiefs and, and what the, what the plan is. Because I, I, that's, I don't see us continuing in the route that we're going.
There have been discussions. I became chief in nineteen ninety-nine. And the Down East Restaurant was still a restaurant and I remember, you know, the other chiefs saying, we've got to be doing it differently. And even at that time, we looked at the numbers, but as well as the station locations, right? When I've been down to the National Fire Academy, right, a much bigger place and I'm not trying to compare exclusively to that. But when you have the Montgomery County Departments in Maryland, Prince George's County, they have built their stations based on mileage, right? We try to say, you don't want to be any more than two and a half miles to be able to get to a next station with an engine, ladder trucks or further, ambulances. So we, we can't do that, but we have certainly said, how is it that we can try to make this better? It comes down to, okay, who's going to be the leadership of that if we give our leadership to another town or vice versa? Somebody's got to be the boss, right?
It looks like Falmouth to me, they've got the staffing, the manpower and the rest of us are, are, are just pieces of that larger puzzle.
Yeah. And, and in talking again to Chief Rice is in Falmouth, and this could be a discussion for, for a long time. Their call volume is, is quite busier than ours. I think they're doing, they're doing over two thousand, twenty-five hundred calls. So they're doing twice as many as, as we are doing. So with their ten people on, times the four shifts, Cape, right, they have the twenty on. Cape is not a real different community. We can't share that. North Yarmouth's got a half position coming January first. So they're not able to provide that delivery of service to us, nor can we do it to them. So if there's a way to try to manage a way to build facilities to get it so we're all separate and we're trying to make sure that we're delivering the product that each individual community wants, that's above my level where the managers and, and the counselors to say, here, here is what we're looking at for numbers and how do we make that happen? This slide solely shows that we can't go to any other department and bring to them what they're bringing to us. And again, we showed the numbers earlier, two hundred and eighty-one times last year, we had to do mutual aid, two hundred and eighty-one, right? So about a thousand did not require that.
What does that mean that you had to do mutual aid? Meaning you had to assist someone else? Or we required assistance from another community?
Yes. And, and the number that, we had way too many slides, so we tried to pare these down so we didn't just overwhelm. But one of the slides, mutual aid is, and it's just the way the National Fire Incident Reporting System works. If we go to a fire in Yarmouth, we get one number, right? If we have a fire in Cumberland and Yarmouth and Falmouth and Gray come to it, we've got three mutual aids that have come to our town. But it still only shows up as one number because we don't want to, it can be perceived as, all right, now we're trying to make up the numbers. If they put in a number and then we put in a number for them, it's, it's not a representative, fair number to be, hey, here's, here's what we're doing. I thought you were raising your hand.
Yeah.
Do this one.
I, I think the slide is, is telling because honestly, without the staffing of an engine, we're, we're not bringing anything to the table. I mean, we really have to get to three to four more full-time people, which is anywhere from twelve to sixteen to bring a full complement to another department and say, okay, let's team up. And it's, it's not going to be a combined department per se, but it'll be more of a mutual aid on steroids, you know, it'll be an automatic. It'll be an automatic response between the two communities because we can't leave our primary ambulance to go up somewhere and not have any staffing here in town. So with the additional staffing, we deal with every emergency first, that the ability to send another ambulance even is almost impossible for us most days. Dan and Andy jump in when they can, but a lot of times they're in different directions too. So we're in a really tough spot. When Bob and I met with the, the town of Falmouth, they looked at our staffing and said, you guys are very light in comparison to what your neighbors are, and they were right. And I think it's going to have to start with both councils maybe getting together, talking about how do we work toward this? Because it, it can't happen in one budget. It's going to happen over time and we've got to figure out what that model looks like. Cause doing what we're doing now is not going to work.
So to make sure I understand the request here, because I'm just reading obviously the subject line here of this memo too. It's to, to hire four full-time firefighter slash EMT providers. So with your logic and what you discussed, that every image up there is effectively four people behind it.
That's correct.
You're effectively asking us to add an additional little person icon in the Cumberland. So that we match Yarmouth, which ironically has a population of six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two. Is that correct?
Yarmouth does, has a bigger population than us.
Okay, well, Google just misinformed me or maybe it picked up the wrong Yarmouth, but.
Yarmouth mass maybe.
I guess, just, I know you have more to go through, but it's like, looking at this right here, you wonder, like, if we regionalize, you know, down the road, we'd still need to have the bodies. So like, that, it's not like, I don't know. I just seems like an easy, I feel like we're doing a disservice to taxpayers by not being able to provide service when they need it, you know? If you're off-site, you're essentially waiting until that person is taken care of to be able to take care of someone else or hoping that one of our partners goes, correct?
Yeah. I mean, we could have a thousand people and still have those times where, yeah, where we're there, but twenty-seven percent of the time, we have concurrent calls. So we have to figure out, maybe the ambulance is at the hospital with one and we're calling mutual aid, or we're trying to get call company together. If we have a paramedic on duty that can come and assist with that, um, but that's a lot. You know, quarter of the time, we have two calls going at the same time and we're just not able to do that. We'll dispatch one of our, our second ambulance, but quite often, um, there's nobody, um, coming. So we've got, uh, an out-of-town ambulance, uh, that we're asking, um, to have.
Counselor.
I see the rescue part of this a lot more than I do the fire department part of it. And they've done a phenomenal job, like on the turnpike and on the interstate with mutual aid with Falmouth and Gray, because if you're familiar where the sign shop is across from my shop, if there's an accident in Gray and it's northbound before the Gray exit, Cumberland will cover it. Am I correct, Danny?
Yes.
And likewise, if there's an accident, accident in Cumberland, south of the plaza, Falmouth will cover it in Cumberland.
So you're almost regionalized already.
During the day, you might see two guys show up with the ambulance. This weekend, we had an accident in New Gloucester, three-car accident. And Gray showed up and New Gloucester showed up and there probably was fifteen people with those ambulances and fire trucks, but they said, because it was the weekend. And he said, had it been a weekday, they'd have a skeleton crew. And I'm sure you're running into the same thing. I mean, the bodies are around at night and on the weekends, but they're just not there during the day. So like during the Cumberland fair, if there's an accident on the turnpike, you have to pull somebody off the fair, I'm sure, to go to the turnpike. I mean, and, and you're, you're right, Bailey. I mean, it's a disservice to the public.
Well, it's the demographics of our community too. We have lost about thirty-four hundred hours of call time service in the last decade, just a little bit more than the last decade. Thirty-four hundred hours of hours that we used to have more of just, uh, ten years ago than we do today. It's a changing community and we're, we just can't get the people to show up to the calls, especially during the work week, because they're all working elsewhere.
You know, Bailey, I, I gotta echo what you said. Our number one priority in this town should be the protection of our citizens, number one. And I'd rather do away with a lot of stuff than I would run shorthanded with a rescue and a fire department. And it, it's not, when, when I was a kid, we had a lot of volunteer firemen. Those, those days are long gone. And we've got to walk into two thousand and twenty-four and say, this is the way we got to operate.
And, and look what you're doing with your police department. We've got, we had twenty-five calls last night, last month that were assisted by the police department. Cause those now are, the majority of that department now is licensed EMTs. So they're almost on the scene first to help, to give that extra set of hands. If that weren't the case, we'd be in a lot, a lot of trouble right now.
We've got a few more just stats, because I think it really helps substantiate where we're at with a few things. So I've got Andy, who's going to bring a few things up. And then, you know, certainly don't be afraid to ask him questions or I can come back, whatever you want. But we just wanted to hit where those stats came from and the explanation to it.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Andy's the numbers guy.
Yeah.
He's here to hit us with the numbers.
I try to be. And on that note, uh, Counselor Douglas, when we look at staffing, you know, NFPA provides specific data in regions of the U.S. For the northeast region, for example, one point five firefighters per thousand. Where we're a combination department doing both fire and EMS, you know, multi-hazard department, really have to look at doubling that staff for handling the EMS calls. So right now, if we wanted to be fully complimented to meet these NFPA guidelines, just looking at the, the numbers themselves, twenty-four full-timers. I am a big proponent of regionalization as well. We've been having these conversations for decades and I think we've seen an exacerbation with COVID, where we've seen volunteer terrorism continue to go down. Every department, at, at least that I know of in the state of Maine, are struggling to recruit, uh, and retain the best talent. When I look at the four challenging areas in public safety, specifically the fire department, it's securing funding to ensure adequate resources, adequate staffing, which comes down to what the community wants. I would say the second big thing is health and wellness of our firefighters and EMTs. We're seeing about a forty percent, uh, depression in public safety workers and about a third of our public safety professionals have PTSD. So we need to put more resources into the health and wellness of our staff. The third one is how do we utilize emerging technology to benefit our response times? So reducing, uh, the time it takes to get to a call. When we look at the numbers, those numbers to responding to a call are so important because in a cardiac arrest situation, for example, we see a ten percent reduction in survivability for every minute that goes by. So if it's taking us eight to ten minutes to get to, uh, the scene, we know there's virtually no chance of somebody surviving that cardiac arrest. And it's not me being an alarmist. This is looking at the data. The same thing holds true with fires today. Fires are burning hotter, uh, more aggressively than ever, mainly due to the construction as well as the furnishings. Twenty, thirty years ago, and I know Deputy Crowe and Chief Small could, could easily get up here and talk about this, but we would see flashover in about fifteen to twenty minutes. That is, all of the items within the residence or a specific room, that room of origin, is going to simultaneously ignite in about fifteen to twenty minutes. Today, we're seeing that in about two to three minutes. So the likelihood of somebody surviving a flashover is very, very low. And also if a firefighter is caught in a flashover, our chances of survival is also very low. So that's why it's so important when we look at critical tasks of a firefighter, to do them within a certain step and to do them within a certain timeframe so that we reduce any civilian injuries, firefighter injuries, et cetera. And then finally, how do we utilize our agency resources? Going back to mutual aid, how can we have robust, uh, mutual aid agreements, which I think we do? But with the staffing levels of what they are in every community, we're struggling to provide re- resources to our neighbors. Neighbors sometimes are struggling to get it to us. So I think where we see downstream efficiency in training, you know, having regional training, you know, if every department has a ladder truck, does every department need a one point five million dollar ladder truck? Or can we look at regionally having one department do it? And saving about one point five million over a twenty-year truck? I think that's where we're going to see our cost savings long-term. And I think at the end of the day, any department would come in and say, we're willing to take this over, but there's a price tag for it. So understandably, we have to keep that in mind. I think it was Counselor Douglas that stated, we need to have these resources and we're doing a disservice for our residents. We just want to put this out there now because things are not going to get better. When we look at our emergency response and public safety providers, they're, they're going to continue to be bothersome. So on that note, we'll move to the next slide, but I think Chief Small did a great job of highlighting where we are in comparison to our neighbors. This also, this also looks at the population. We thought it was very pertinent, uh, to look at the population growth. And in the state of Maine, the town of Cumberland is the fast, the second fastest growing community with populations over five thousand. Number one was Herman, which is up near Bangor, and we tied with the town of Wells at eighteen. Scarborough is at seventeen percent, so they were just one behind us. We also included the square mileage, the number of stations and the staffing, so we have some side-by-side comparisons to where we are and where we should be. And then finally, when we look at benchmarking, when we look at national best practice, we look at really a few different agencies. The first one is OSHA, uh, which Chief Small noted too. The second one is NFPA seventeen, ten and twenty, which looks at staffing for both career and combination departments. When we have a structured fire, even in the low-risk category, this is a two-story, uh, two thousand square foot residential structure. We need a minimum of six to start out, but to enter that building and fully and effectively fight this fire, we're looking at fifteen to sixteen. So from an NFPA standpoint, six is a low number. We know we're not going to get there overnight, but we have to have this conversation to, to look at a way forward. How are we going to get to where we need to get to based on, uh, the governing bodies? Current challenges, staffing. Again, the biggest challenge that fire department space, especially in Maine, and really anywhere in the nation, is securing the funding to ensure that we have adequate staffing. No one available for second EMS calls or handling just a run-of-the-mill fire call. In two thousand and twenty-three, five hundred and fifty-eight of our twelve fifty-two calls for service occurred during, during those weekday hours, so seven AM to five PM. We're just not seeing the numbers that we saw in our call, call company members twenty, thirty years ago. And we have a, a significant reliance on our mutual aid partners without the ability to reciprocate that mutual aid.
And then back to you, Chief, for the summary.
Bill, sorry. Sorry, it's really close. Um, where are we, where is the Chase's Pit project at?
They will be back at the planning board, I believe, uh, in April or May.
Okay. And Chief Small, what is the runway you need to hire? Like if you were to get four positions, what is the runway to get someone hired, trained and ready to rock and roll? Like how much time is that you're looking at?
Well.
Or do you have people in mind?
But that's why we dropped the bar initially from being a, having to be a paramedic to be considered for the job along with firefighter one and two, to bring it to the basic level, which quite honestly, every single town, uh, has done that. Someone there have said, you know what? We got a couple of paramedics. Let's have a couple of basics and, and we'll call it good. If we bring in an EMT basic, they'll already have had that as well as their firefighter one. And then we'll immediately work to budget to bring them up. And that's what I was saying earlier. It's not just the cost of the class, might be covering the overtime or, or whatever, but we would not want to take anybody in and they, you know, cross our fingers that they're going to be able, um, to get there. We hire people all the time that might come out, uh, come out of different fire academies and EMS class can be, um, a few months long. Paramedic classes over a year. It's a long time and that's who we're hiring.
Okay.
So you're saying effectively it would be a year to get, let's say you wanted, got all four folks. It's a year runway?
No, we, we would hire somebody that's a, well, if you were to get a firefighter EMT, we could, if we can find the staff, like everybody has the staffing challenges of trying to hire people, but that would be the minimum threshold would be a firefighter and an EMT, because they have to be able to go to both calls.
Chief, I'm, you had me at hello. I'm all for the four positions.
You're too easy, Mike.
But let me ask you, we recently learned that Cape Elizabeth man's full-time with per diem, not full-time employees. Can you and, uh, Andy give a plus-minuses of, of, of why? Why do you want him full-time and not per diem, the positions?
I've talked to the, the chief in Cape Elizabeth, Steve Young, because a lot of us have asked, how in the world are you doing it? We know it's Cape Elizabeth, you know, they have their own specials, things. He doesn't know. He does not know. He has a lot of people from South Portland and Portland, Scarborough that live in his immediate area, that they've had that job, job a long time. Scarborough's had per diems for the longest time. Right? So people have, you know what? Hey, I'm going to stay, uh, to that point. Nobody else, nobody else can find that. When we became a full-time department, as it should, the full-time employees get the first refusal on shifts. A per diem now, when we had some, gets pushed to the side, if you will, because the full-time staff would get that first choice. So that's why the per diems don't work. Yeah, there's not the benefits that a full-time person would, would receive. And we still try to do that a little bit, but it's just not there. And we've tried and tried, trust me, that we have tried to get them and we just can't make it happen.
So what's the bottom line? What's, what's it going to cost a person?
We're about the same, uh, is what Chief Rumsey said at the ninety thousand. But again, we had twenty-one forces in January, uh, those twelve-hour shifts, twenty-one of them, because we were short one person and nobody else was signing up for them.
So that's ninety, is that with emperors, um, health insurance?
Probably closer to a hundred with equipment, because of the specialty equipment of firefighter EMS.
We were going to say a hundred, but since he said ninety, we went with that. But yes, it's about in that time.
All I just needed is ballpark, so.
Would two make a difference? Would two?
No, no question. Cause that way we could have the second ambulance staffed twenty-four, seven.
Okay.
That, that would be huge.
Bailey, I don't know if you really closed the loop on your question. She was asking about the Chase pit. So like, ha- has your request factored in the possibility of seventy-two homes coming in? I mean,
it's.
Is that number correct? Like, I think seventy-two?
Probably over seven or eight years too.
Sure. Okay. But I mean, is this, is this thinking about those coming online and?
Yeah. I mean, Cumberland crossing, you know, a hundred and ten houses or whatever, few people per house. There's a lot of projects, um, in just single-family dwellings that have grown that we're going to, uh, quite a bit. So it really, really has, uh, put a spike on, uh, what, what it is that, that we're doing. But Andy's got one more, uh, piece of
Sure.
data to sell.
Thanks, Chief.
Or share.
Counselor Leeds, you asked a, a question earlier about per diem. I think what we're seeing, and this is not anecdotally, this is looking at data. What we're finding with per diems, there, certainly there's a cost savings there, but with the amount of overtime that we're seeing in this, these agencies, per diems that once had templated shifts, they would come in on their day off every single week. We knew they were going to come in. Because of the overtime, they're calling out. And because of those callouts, it's increasing the overtime. So when you look at the, the pros and cons of it, in a lot of places, we're seeing it cost more to hire a per diem because of the number of calls that we're seeing historically in a lot of these departments. Chief Small talked about Scarborough. Scarborough is looking to add eight new positions because of the reduction in the number of per diem employees that they can count on and rely upon. Westbrook's another example. Uh, they've reduced their per diem staffing. There was three per diems on twenty-four, seven. They're now down to one and they're phasing out those per diems, uh, organi- organically or through attrition. So as much as I would love to say, you know, per diems are certainly a way to go. From a cost-saving standpoint, if they come to work and they're not calling out to take a forced job or an overtime, absolutely. But they're not, it's, it's not consistent. You know, having FTEs or full-time employees, you know, they're coming to their work. And if they don't, there's discipline. It's so hard, uh, to find good per diems and then retain them is the other big piece. So that adds a little bit level of consistency and ensuring that we're providing the best service possible to the residents of Cumberland.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Counselor Bill.
I remember when the, uh, the ambulance was just a, just a ride. They showed up and three in the back and put the sirens on and they headed for Maine Bay, you know, back when I was a kid. So, you know, things have changed in the last sixty years. I won't give you anything until you come back with a plan of consolidation of services and to treat, treat the patient. Uh, I think that that's a, a, an honest request. Uh, I'm on the county budget. I've told the county manager every time. on the county budget, I've told the county manager, every time you ask for an increase in county budget, there better be a benefit to the towns that are paying for this. Uh, and, and I think that's, I think that's a, a valid request. Get out there, talk to these chiefs, and say, what can we do, because the, the managers and the councils are gonna start demanding it, because we can't just throw money at a problem. We have to have a solution, and that solution, I believe, is consolidation, and frankly, I'd like to see a county fire department, because the rest of the country operates on that kind of a basis. I know we live in a rural community, a rural state, rather, not so much a rural community, but the solution isn't gonna be adding four people, and we're competing for the same four people that everybody else in the state's competing for. We have to have something that is better, a, a, a better outcome.
Bob, I think, I think you gotta start, though, at your level. You can't start at Dan and Andy's level. It's unfair to both of them, because we have been through this at least five times that I can count. So, my request to you would be to direct myself and maybe some of the other managers to come up with some kind of resolution, to sit down with councilors that are committed to do this. How many times have we come to the, to the dance and, and we had no dance partner? It's been multiple times. So, I, I know, I know you're frustrated, I really understand that, but I think we're at a place, and I think you've got that from Falmouth anyway, that they are very willing, because of our common border, and how much real estate between these two communities are almost easy to get to, that, that makes some sense. But if we can get the two councils to get together and just say, let's, let's talk about what we can do, I don't care if it's just what Andy said, let's not buy another, uh, ladder truck, if we can use yours, and we'll buy into yours, instead of all of us having all these ladder trucks. I mean, that's a start. We gotta start with the simple stuff and the low-hanging fruit, get that out of the way, and then the, this will all fall into place as we work together, but I think it has to start with you, I really do.
Counselor Douglas.
Um, is that something we could lean on GP COG for to facilitate?
Well, we did.
Okay.
And we're waiting, we're waiting for a report that I'm not sure how much value it's gonna bring.
Okay.
In talking with all the managers, uh, many of us were really never interviewed or never, uh, we never, we never had a discussion together with GP COG.
Yep.
So, I don't know what this report's gonna look like, maybe just a regurgitation of twenty years of, you know, regional, regional efforts. Uh, but everyone, everyone to a person is frustrated. In the last month, managers' meeting I had, South Portland was saying, we've got to do something regionally, we can't continue down this path, it's just too expensive.
So, Bob, I agree with you on the regionalization, I'm a big fan of it. However, I think ignoring a problem is negligent, so I would say something like, let's do two, and then if we wanna have this conversation again, these are the action items we need to move forward with another two, right? Like, so, not to make it so methodical, but I agree with you, we need to have a conversation, but if we wanna staff up four, then, you know, let's do the two now, and then X, Y, Z needs to happen before we have two more. What are your thoughts, Bob?
I'm, I'm going to have that conversation, but I, I'm wondering if we can't broaden it beyond the, the limits of our community.
Yeah.
You know?
But I feel like we can't ignore it.
Well, Counselor Story King's got a question as well.
I have questions, probably more for you, Bill, and I, one of them was in the questions I sent, that I don't know if they came through or not, because...
I have them, I have them.
One of them was, um, does the 2025 proposed budget include the new people?
It does not, none.
It does not?
Zero.
Zero, that was my question.
And can you tell me what projections means? That's not, like, I'm used to year-to-date.
Oh, that, that's where we're...
We used to have year-to-date, but now we have...
Well, year, year-to-date used to be dependent on the day we sent it out. We've looked forward...
Right, but you could figure, if you were halfway through the year, you could kind of figure it out. Projections seem to go over. So, if I look at our budget for 2024 Fire Department, our budget for the first six lines, which are salaries, totals seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, but projections are eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-seventy-two dollars, so that's a difference of ninety-eight-thousand dollars over what we budgeted. What you've got budgeted in the current budget is only nineteen-thousand over that projected number. So, I was kind of hoping the new people were in that, so that we could see that some of this was just cost-shifting of how we pay salaries, overtime. I don't know what sta- what's station pay, Dan?
I'm not sure what...
It's a line, it says station pay.
Oh, I'm sorry, the station pay and call pay are for the volunteers. Uh, station pay is used for their training, um, and the call pay, and that's...
Is when they go out on a call?
If they go on a call, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's not, uh, a big number.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
But that's one of the lines I sort of added up. I think what concerns me to the rest of the council is we own three ambulances, correct?
Correct.
But we can only staff one.
Yeah.
I would agree.
And how many times do we need more than one ambulance going out on a call?
Twenty-eight percent of the time, they show, twenty-eight percent of the time.
Right, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna push for the firefighters as much as I am gonna push for the EMT, but, um, yeah, I think it's kind of silly to own three ambulances and only have one on the road at a time.
Well, the, the value of the third is that it is basically, we keep it until the wheels fall off, and we really have not gotten any serious offers.
And I understand we need one at a football game, we need them at, we need them at the Cumberland Fair, but would it work when we only need?
It sure would, but honestly, it's one of the only things we bring to the game in many cases, when another town needs a sec- a spare, uh, New Gloucester just used ours for two weeks.
Just keep it from getting rusty, okay?
Yeah, you don't put a lot of money into it, to be honest with you.
Use the wash bay at the public works.
So, I see that the proposal is for four more starting in January, does that appear in the budget anywhere?
It does not. There, that was cut in the manager's budget, uh, that's, uh, the chief brought that forward in his original proposal, and, uh, because the way that, where the budget was heading, uh, again, remember, every hundred-and-fifty thousand we add is another ten cents to the tax rate.
I know.
So, that would be fifteen cents.
To contracted services, because I'm not sure what those are, like, the police department has two hundred...
Okay, can I just stop you for a second?
Can we do that another time?
Yeah, because that's, that gets more into a lot of other stuff.
So, are we, I believe we have a question, Counselor.
Sure.
We, we worked for almost three years on a local dispatch center with five of our neighbors, and we were the only ones that ended up at the county for dispatch. The others all did their own thing for a while, and eventually came, some of them, but a lot of them still today have their own centers. So, we have tried, and that is the difficulty, but it does have to start with you, and it does have to start with, you know, two councils willing to work together and trying something. I, and honestly, if, even if it's stationed, even if it's sharing of employees or equipment, all of those things do start making inroads to, uh, consolidate an apartment, because a larger department benefits everybody. It benefits the, you know, full-time firefighter EMTs and paramedics that are looking for a career and an advancement, so they don't have to go to a bigger town, they can come to a bigger department, and if we could pull in two or three towns that are, are similar demographics and similar area, baby steps at first, but we, we haven't even been able to get out of the crib, so we gotta, we gotta start doing something, uh, because what we're doing now just is not working for them. Uh, when we talked about four people, we, we talked about, uh, basically hiring four in January, so essentially, it would be funding two people, but you would commit for essentially two years, funding, uh, funding two full-time this year, and then an additional two full-time next year, uh, because that would make a significant dent in going forward. Now, for tonight, this is a ton of information for you, and the chiefs have done a great job talking to you about this, but I think you gotta think about it a little bit more, and I think we gotta come back, uh, between fire and police, and come back somewhere during the budget deliberations, and just make a decision on, you know, can we find the money elsewhere, can we work with other communities, and can we start a process that we're at least talking to maybe one or two of our neighbors to, you know, start this. We don't need eight people, eight towns in the room, but we certainly need at least one or two more.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
One quick thing, and, and like Bill Stiles is saying, we've done this a lot, as far as trying to do the group discussion, but we would never, ever, ever turn down something and say, you know what, there's always room for improvement, so we wanna do that. My ask is if we can start that sooner rather than later, because budget process will be on us again, and then we'll be trying to articulate that. So, if we can do something together, I'm happy to host, coordinate, whatever it is, but I think it's better if we can do that sooner rather than later, so we can get better information out to you, you guys can process it, uh, and do that, so please let us help where we can.
Great.
I just love your attitude. That's such a nice outlook on life.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it.
Well, also appreciate all the data and the information you brought as well. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? I think we got about...
Very helpful.
Ten to fifteen minutes left. I know we've got other stuff. Do you wanna take a...
You wanna take a break, uh, because I'm not gonna bombard you with more stuff, because I've beaten you down pretty well tonight, so, sorry about that.
So, do we wanna take a ten-minute break before regular council?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.